Call to order the Town of Old Sablek Zoning Commission for Wednesday, January 3rd, 2024, 7:00 PM, Town Hall, First Floor Conference Room 302 Main Street, Old Sablek. Role call, myself, Mark Calderella, Chairman, Jerry Lewis, Secretary, Robert Friedman, regular member, Laura Gray, regular member, and John Henry, regular member. We also have all of our alternates, Justin Terrible, Brenda Dyson, and Michael Kelly, as well as our CEO Officer, our Clerk, Joanne Galley, and two members of the audience. Regular business minutes from our last meeting of Monday, December 18th. Has everyone had a chance to review it? And there any corrections or additions that anyone might have?
Question on page three. There's two motion boxes in the big paragraph above both of those motions there. Near the end, there was discussion about reducing the street frontage requirement from 350 to 225 feet, where the depth is 400 feet on two sides. I thought it was more than just discussion. Was there a decision made, or was it just discussion?
I recall it as discussion at that point. I'm not sure of the other commissioners.
Okay. That then also goes for discussion regarding the number of curb cuts?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. No other questions?
If I make the motion to accept the minutes from Monday, December 18th, 2023, Zoning Commission, do you have a second?
I'll second it, but then I have you will change in that first on page three.
Yes.
Set opposed, then it'll be me.
Jerry opposed closing the public hearing, and that will be corrected.
Okay.
Okay. So?
So I seconded it.
I have to amend the motion to include the correction to page three at the top from Jerry's comment. Jerry, you seconded it. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Not hearing any, take a vote. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes, 500. Thank you. We have elections of officers this evening for the new term. Will go in order of sequence. First would be Chairman. Is there any nominations on the floor?
I nominate Mark Calderon.
Second.
Any, anyone else? Any other nominations?
I move nominations for Chairman be closed.
Who are we using as a second?
Jerry got it in there. She jumped in before Justin. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much, everyone.
Well, I move that there be cast one unanimous ballot for Mark Calderon, Chairman.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Jerry seconded.
Seconded by Jerry again.
Yep. Any discussion? Not hearing any, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much. Next would be Vice Chairman, and I make a motion to nominate Geraldine Lewis, Vice Chair of the Zoning Commission for the new term.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by John Henry. Any other discussion or nominations on the floor? Not hearing any. Bob, you want to make that modification to the vote?
I move that there be cast one unanimous ballot for Jerry Lewis for Vice Chairman.
Thank you.
Seconded by John Henry. No discussion. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you.
And lastly, would be Secretary, and I would nominate John Henry as Secretary for the Zoning Commission.
I'll second that.
Any other nominations on the floor?
I move nominations for Secretary of the Zoning Commission be closed, and that a unanimous ballot for John Henry be cast.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you very much, everyone. Congratulations, John and Jerry.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mark.
Thank you. Onto, I skipped over correspondence. I'm sorry about that, but is there any correspondence this evening?
No, just a Christmas card from Jacobson.
Okay.
Minimal correspondence.
Minimal correspondence, okay.
Happy correspondence.
Item number four, deliberations. Item A, petition to amend the zoning regulations, Section 53, drive-through windows for financial institutions, pharmacies, indoor restaurants, or other food and beverage establishments. Additioner, Old Sablek Zoning Commission, action, consider, and act no later than 2024. We case closed the public hearing at our last meeting in December, so that deliberations are limited to the five zoning commission members that are here this evening. So I open that up for comments and discussion now.
I would recommend adopting the previously discussed text modification in the application regarding the minimum street frontage distance to change it from 350 to 225. That's in 53A.
Yes.
Yes. And that's where the depth is 400 feet on two sides?
I'm sorry, yeah. The original number was 350 feet. Just that's the only one to change. Just change to 350 to 225. Mathematically, it pairs best with two edges of 400 feet to achieve the otherwise required 90,000 square feet in 53B. And then the other change that was discussed that I think makes sense based on the recommendations from others, and that the number of curb cuts should not be increased, and that's in 53B. The last sentence is no new curb cuts will be allowed. In order to make that clearer, no new or additionally in number curb cuts will be allowed. You can move the old ones, but you can't create a greater number of curb cuts. And that was recommended by the Planning Commission?
Yes.
They had a plan of conservation and development consolidate curb cuts portion. Now I can't read. There it is. In the, got the right section. And the policies and actions for economic development policy, 1H, Part E, consolidate And in consolidating those curb cuts, appears to me to be in complete agreement with the plan of conservation and development that you not add more curb cuts in number to a site that already has curb cuts.
One question. At the last public hearing, there was some discussion about adding language following that existing curb cuts may be relocated on a lot.
That's correct. We did discuss that.
Do you want to keep that text, or is it somewhat implied?
Which one? Which one is that?
So in Section B, following the text about no additional curb cuts, there was some discussion about existing curb cuts may be relocated, adding text to make that clear?
To make it even clearer that existing curb cuts may be relocated. Yeah. Those are the portions that I felt stuck out as desirable changes for what was in the proposed text. Then there were other recommendations from the EDC and Planning Commission and others that there be multiple drive-through window establishments on certain 90,000 square foot And a question regarding Section 53A, where, in my opinion, 53A unambiguously limits the number of drive-through windows for indoor restaurants and other food and beverage services and pharmacies to one per lot, while still permitting liner buildings for other uses. Even restaurants or other food and beverage establishments without a drive-through window can be in street liner buildings. The second drive-through window on the lot is possible if it's for a financial institution, that would still stand. And a drive-through window for a financial institution could also be the only drive-through window on a lot, the same as other drive-through windows in a pedestrian node. And so you could end up with two drive-through windows on a lot as long as one of them and only one of them is a financial institution. And then, let's see, the liner buildings, oh, I'm sorry, the possibility of combinations of multiple drive-through windows with different measurement standards that were raised by others, using area calculations and distances in between, that could have, in my opinion, that could have results that are conflicting. And the suggested text recommended by others results in no minimum separation between drive-through windows on such qualifying lots, and no relative location on site. And the text that they've proposed would result in differences on different lots in the same district for regulation. And my concern is that there's no upper limit, that it was a 90,000 square foot unit to be allocated and dedicated, but dedicated does not necessarily mean what it appears to mean. If you got 90,000 square feet correctly outlined, and you could have two plus one, that would be three drive-through windows. And for 270,000 square feet allocated, you could end up with more drive-through windows. I'm sorry. You'd end up with multiple drive-through windows on 270,000 square feet. And our proposed text would have but one, and maybe two with one to finance, right? So for 270,000 square feet, you could have more drive-through windows than just one on a lot. And if the lot encompassed more than one 270,000 square foot possibility, you could end up with even more drive-throughs on a single lot than three. And so the proposed regulations from others is, to me, ambiguous, certainly by comparison to our 53A, which is one per lot. Let's see. Section 53G of our proposed text still has, it's one line. It says, well, "Reduced setbacks for pedestrian nodes for liner buildings will not apply to buildings with drive-through windows." And that makes perfect sense to me, because it's in the pedestrian node where drive-through windows in the B4 district are under discussion. And that the whole B4 district, in the B4 district purpose section of our regulations, get to the news. Gateway Business B4 District Purpose, to allow for development of regional businesses that requires easy access to major highways. Applicable standards require building and site layout appropriate to the gateways to the Town of Old Sablek. These regulations pay particular attention to ensure that traffic congestion caused by these developments will not degrade or impede access to the town itself. And indeed, Section 1.1.1 of the zoning regulations in their entirety, the purpose of the zoning commission. The zoning commission adopts these regulations for the purpose set forth in the general statutes of State of Connecticut, namely, 1.1.1, to lessen congestion in the streets. And allowing drive-through windows at liner buildings at a 10-foot setback in the pedestrian node is much less likely to lessen congested in the streets than regulating, as we have chosen in our proposed text, that there be 100-foot setback for buildings that contain drive-through windows. Now, other buildings can go in, other uses can go in the liner buildings at a distance of, let's say, setback from the street line of 10 feet. And that comes from Section 68. Just for the regulations nonsense. 68.1.2, harmony and scale, massing and organization, especially 68.1.2, Part B, Part 1. I'm sorry, Part B.2, setback for building structure and parking in pedestrian node. In any pedestrian node, the commission may allow or may require that any non-residential use or mixed-use building or structure be set back from street line 10 feet. And in the gray box next to it, within the pedestrian node, do not locate a parking area or access driveway two or connecting parking areas between a non-residential building and the street line. And so the setback of 10 feet in the, for buildings to be set back 10 feet in the pedestrian node is further clarified by their not allowing any kind of drive area between the building and the street. And there is no other use of the word reduced setback in the regulations, except in the, what would you call it, the index, where you can find things. It refers to when that 68.1.2 was adopted. It says reduced setback. But other than that, this 53G is the very first time that there is the use of the term reduced setback. Let's see. Section 53F establishes the street line setback for buildings with a drive-through window of 100 feet, and this allows for assurance that all required stacking spaces, 53K and 53L, will fit on site. And that goes along with recommendations from the Connecticut Department of Transportation regarding stacking spaces. And while the zoning commission recognizes a trend, perhaps from COVID and continuing today, for customers to stay in their vehicles while conducting business, the encouragement of this is not necessarily in agreement with other parts of the plan of conservation and development. Specifically, the POCD Current Conditions and Background section on the Spencer Plain Road Pedestrian Node says, "A unique mix of retail shopping, dining, and living less than half mile from Interstate 95, with a focus on getting people to the area and out of their cars to walk, shop, and dine." And so the number of drive-through windows should be agreeable or in harmony with the concept of what the POCD calls for getting people to the area and out of their cars. So one per lot makes sense. In Section 53G, it allows new drive-through windows, that there can be drive-through windows, based on our, when was that, March of 2023, that the commission voted four to one to allow for drive-through windows in the B4 Gateway Business District. And yes, they are allowed, even under these proposed text modifications, that there will be drive-through windows that can feasibly be located in the B4 district, in the pedestrian node, while continuing to preserve and enhance the reason people are attracted to live and visit Old Sablek. It's in the Transportation and Infrastructure section of the 2023 Plan of Conservation and Development, 3H, carefully consider the use of drive-through services in core civic, commercial, and pedestrian node areas. And we have carefully considered that drive-through windows can be provided under our proposed text modifications, especially in Section 53. Also in that section of the POCD, Part 3G, this is Policy Number 3, Part 3G, to transition core commercial and civic areas from auto dependency through road diets, complete streets, and increase residential development density. Well, we have a complete street diagram in our existing regulations. We have a sketch in Section 62 and another 62.2.3, and there's another in Section 68 regarding what the complete street should look like. And they show buildings, and in the, I'm sorry, in the sidewalk plan referenced in the POCD, they show buildings close to the street and parking behind those liner buildings, and none of them show drive-throughs close to the street. So that would be in keeping with the POCD. And section, in that same Transportation and Infrastructure section, Policy Number 3, Section 3F, review regulations to ensure that new development prioritizes non-motorized and pedestrian circulation and connection to surrounding neighborhoods. And that's part of the sidewalk plan. The sidewalk plan is in our regulation. That's in the Access, Circulation, Parking, and Voting section. Section 62.2.1 shows maps from the sidewalk plan. Sidewalk plan is referenced in the POCD, and it shows an actual diagram, Section 62.2.1, Part B, Part 6. In the POCD, Policies and Actions for Economic Development in the Spencer Plain Gateway, to promote experience-driven design that anchors and blends uses at the Spencer Plain Gateway, and to support high-end retailers, sit-down restaurants, fitness centers, theaters, salons, and more. While a restaurant or food or beverage establishment with a drive-through window must have a sit-down restaurant component, the sit-down restaurant could certainly be promoted or supported by zoning regulations without it having to be with a drive-through window, it would be 100 feet setback from the street line. In that same section of the POCD, then, the last part, Part D, is encourage development to accommodate both autos and pedestrians that would allow visitors to walk comfortably between buildings and shopping centers. That's not just on the sidewalk, but that's on-site, that there be pedestrians would be equally encouraged and accommodated to walk comfortably between buildings. And the fewer roadways, accessways, driveways they'd have to cross, the better. And accommodate, the proposed text under consideration is aligned with the POCD, because it accommodates the vehicle-centric trend while addressing issues around the pedestrian node, plus landscaping and surrounding businesses and districts, other districts that may be impacted by drive-through windows. The vehicle-centric trend is a reality, and yet we're not trying to make it the primary focus. The regulations that are proposed are just setting boundaries for what the commission has allowed, drive-through windows in the B4 pedestrian node areas. So, I got those. With regard to the referrals that we got, I noted that the DEEP letter regarding this text change application, it was okay with the approval of the text change, but the letter itself was addressed to the Planning Commission, not to the Zoning Commission. Is it okay for the Zoning Commission to consider that as a response to the referral from the Zoning Commission for input from the DEEP?
Yes. I believe the DEEP, they're used to some combined planning in zoning commission?
Yeah.
And the zoning commission sent them the referral, so that's more of a typo, but it was intended as a response to the October 24th referral from the zoning.
And the referral to the Planning Commission came back to the response to the Zoning Commission regarding the text change application, said, do you have a copy of that? That was from the Planning Commission?
The December 11th?
Yeah.
I have it.
Jerry has it here. Thank you. This, the December 11th, Planning Commission Interoffice Memo to Mark Calderon, Chairman of Zoning Commission, first sentence. This memorandum serves to report to the Zoning Commission that the Planning Commission approved the petition to amend the regulations with the following recommendations. And then they recommend changing the number of drive-through windows based on 90,000 square foot units. I've already discussed that. And they were in favor of additional drive-throughs on 270,000 square foot units of area. I've already addressed that. And they wish to change the 1,000-foot separation distance for drive-throughs from lot line to lot line. That's not quite what it says in our proposed text change. It's 1,000 feet of separation along the lot lines as measured along the street line. It's not just from, so if there was a lot on one street and around the corner, there's a lot on another street. The two lots might even be touching one another, but as long But as long as there's a thousand feet of street line around the corner, they could each have a drive-through window. And so there are me, what the planning commission numbers changing. It's not quite what they think it is in terms of how they describe it. And then they go on to say the one thousand-foot separation distance will not apply where there are multiple drive-through buildings on the same lot. That then leaves it to any separation distance.
So so the intent of the planning commission was not a thousand feet from lot line, lot line to lot line to be a thousand feet. It wouldn't apply when there were multiple buildings and it would go from buildings, not lot line to lot.
Right.
That was the intent.
Well, we, the zoning commission, I I believe, has chosen the lot line to lot line measurement because it's verifiable and it's not subject to change as if a building were to be torn down, relocated, or if it was a window in a building that was relocated. Those things are more easily changed, even if they're expensive. They're more easily changed than lot lines, which are verifiable and measurable. And then we also have that in our regulations elsewhere where things are measured from lot line to lot line. And the planning commission recommends fifty three, it says fifty three C. I think it's a typo. It should be fifty three B to clarify that no additional curb cuts will be allowed. Oh, I think we already addressed that.
Yes.
So so we we concur with the planning commission and their recommendation for that one, yes. And then the lot, the, is that the final bullet? Yes. If you know page, oh, we was gonna, okay. And then on page two, the last bullet on page two, to amend fifty three E to change the a setback from a hundred feet from the street line to provide more flexibility to the zoning commission to locate drive-through building closer to the street to serve as liner buildings. I've already discussed the undesirability of drive-throughs in liner buildings with regards to pedestrian safety and the pedestrian node in general. And that a hundred-foot setback is much more likely to provide for the required stacking distances in our proposed text as per the recommended numbers by from the Connecticut DOT and from experience in Old Sabre with the three existing restaurant food or beverage drive-throughs that we have. That we're familiar with, drive-through vehicles stacking backing up onto the sidewalk at McDonald's. And that congestion in the streets actually occurs at Duncan when cars can't enter the site because the drive-through stacking has backed up to the point where there's no room on the lot for another car to turn in the desired closest to the building stacking entrance. Yes, there's another entrance, but that leads to the reason for the zoning commission having proposed a regulation to prevent there being a means of cutting into the line from a perpendicular entrance to the stacking line lane. And so I believe we've addressed, I've I've addressed the plant, the planning commission's recommendations and cited how what we have proposed is in alignment with the Plan of Conservation and Development. And so with respect to the comprehensive plan of zoning, which is different from the P O C D. The zoning commission has considered the overall pattern of zoning in Old Sabre and the impact of the text changes on the town. The proposed regulations are made with reasonable consideration of the purpose and intent of the zoning districts and peculiar suitability for drive-through window uses, especially as it applies to B four district and pedestrian node. The zoning commission has given due consideration for the Plan of Conservation and Development, the two thousand twenty three version, and input from referrals. The text is consistent with the comprehensive plan of zoning, even without some of the planning commission's recommendations. The planning commission approved the petition, our our petition to amend the regulations. And we've considered those. Our local knowledge and experience regarding the existing drive-through windows has led the zoning commission to propose text that still allows new drive-through windows with limits. Regulations regarding the three types of drive-through window uses are customized for each use and have been carefully considered. And under the zoning legislative, zoning commission's legislative authority to adopt regulations, I think the proposed text is in good shape.
Well.
Here, other commissioners have comments?
I do. I've had a new device and unfortunately my notes didn't transfer to it, so I'm gonna have to refer to my phone here, so I apologize. So as you know, I'm a new commissioner and I've tried to get up to up to speed as quickly as I can on all the great work you've done over the past almost two years. I'm trying to amend the zoning regulations for drive-throughs. So I watch meetings and I I've read the minutes and I've also read a lot of articles about the pros and cons of drive-throughs. So I would like to just take a big step back. I I love all the detail and and the commitment to our planning and and conservation and development. And all the referrals that have come in from the other commissions, I think they're all excellent. But I'm just wondering if the commission has just looked at pros and cons. Like, why do people want drive-throughs in Old Sabre? People who use the drive-throughs, what do they like about them? So I read an article on, in Q S R magazine. That stands for Quick Service and Fast Casual Restaurant and News. They do an annual drive-through report and they get the data collected by an organization called In Touch Insight. And it's data from thousands of drive-through customers. The reason that the drive-through customers love the drive-throughs is for the convenience, the order accuracy, and the speed of service. And so I can understand that. They also like some other features that have come out since the pandemic to make drive-throughs more efficient. And after reading the article in Q S R magazine, I could I could see that drive-throughs have been redesigned to maximize their efficiency and increase their throughput. So good for the business. However, do we in Old Sabre want to see drive-throughs in the B three and B four district every one thousand people? Is that really the good use of a finite amount of land in town? And so that's my question, since the the text is open tonight and we could really you know, deliberate and discuss drive-throughs. Is this really what we want? Because there are so many cons against drive-throughs. So I I think a lot about land use. And I know that the lawyer has talked about economic development. And I've read in a lot of these references that drive-throughs are an unproductive use of space. They actually generate less tax revenue, so there's a low return on the on land use compared to other businesses with similar revenue. They create low-paying jobs. They require less staff. The people who work in these establishments really can't even afford to live here. So that means more traffic coming in for employees. And overall, the drive-throughs are not consistent with economic development policies. They're not an emerging industry. They don't create high-paying, high-skill jobs. They don't diversify the business base. So overall, I see drive-throughs as inappropriate and and short-sighted economic growth. So and I don't think that the decision to allow drive-throughs today is gonna help tax base in the years to come. Environmentally, from an environmental standpoint, these ninety thousand square foot lots with parking and lanes and all that are large. And that goes against the economic it was the Plan of Conversation Conservation Development. Their suggestion that we should have clustered mixed-use shopping carts that are that are pedestrian-friendly. So drive-throughs just go against that. There's a loss of trees and shade. There's too much pavement. There's increased runoff. They'll need catch basins for stormwater runoff and runoff could also impact wetlands. And then they're just basically, from an environmental standpoint, they're massive traffic generators. So people are gonna know when they're driving on ninety five that they can easy on, easy off in Old Sabra. Get something to eat and get back on the highway. So we're inviting so much more traffic into the town. And is that what we want? Do we want to be be easy on, easy off that you see up and down ninety five? Where does that go here? So from, and then with the environmental, all these cars coming into town are gonna compromise our air quality. Kathy Connolly has pointed out that a ten-minute wait by an idling car in a drive-through adds a pound of carbon to the atmosphere. And for that reason, a lot of towns have decided not to have drive-throughs. Plus, there's noise pollution. We're pulling down trees. That's not gonna help buffer the noise. So more traffic, more noise, more litter. I'm just wondering if that's what we want in our town. And then from the pedestrian standpoint, you've got distracted drivers trying to find their way into the right lanes who might not be looking for pedestrians. And then we've seen with Dunkin' Donuts how the cars stack onto the major roads and block sidewalks and bicycle paths. So we put in these sidewalks to encourage pedestrians. So drive-throughs are counterintuitive to these pedestrian nodes that we have established. Also pedestrians prefer clustered storefronts with a minimum of curb cuts. They shouldn't have to cross a drive-through lane and Bob had had mentioned that, and I know that's been considered when they're walking into a restaurant. So since we don't have a whole lot of extra space in Old Sabra, do we really want to encourage spread out businesses a thousand feet apart with drive-throughs? And it's not gonna, it's gonna extend not only from the Spencer Plains Road, US Boston, the Boston Post Road area that, but if we allow drive-through there, they're likely to also show up on the southern part of Route one fifty four near the bottom malls and and also over towards Merrier's Way. So because this is a deliberation and a discussion tonight, I just wondered if the commission has done the pros and cons and if you've just stepped back and thought, you know, should we even have drive-throughs at all in Old Sabra? Because also, as one of the speakers pointed out, we have a responsibility to enhance the quality of life in our town. And will allowing drive-throughs help us reach that goal?
Right. I think that came up in the workshop that it was in August, in August of twenty twenty two that the commission voted to allow for there to be additional drive-through restaurants, especially regarding the B four districts. We did some clarifications on drive-through windows. And at the time, it was thought that that would work. And then in my opinion, the commission became aware of unintended consequences of that, including some of the issues that you raised and that perhaps in the pedestrian node B four Gateway Business District, drive-throughs should be more constrained than just put them at wherever at wherever they fit on the lot.
Right.
And to the hi- the highest density that they could be achieved. And that our intent here is to regulate them to be consistent with what we have and what other towns have with separation. And then I'm surprised that it took Kathy Connolly to recognize that pollution factor for stacking cars, sitting, waiting, burning fuel, the D E E P didn't mention that. But there are other concerns that are part of the total consideration, but are not quite on-the-ground land use regulatory, but they're part of the thinking that goes into the whole package. So I'm with you on the the concern that an alternative might have been to simply remove drive-through regula- uh, window regulations so that they, we wouldn't have this situation.
Right.
But it has been determined that drive-throughs should be allowed and the the E D C, they'll, do you have the letter from the E D C? The E D C also a regular meeting on December twelfth, and this is the board selected, I got the E D C guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
My chair.
You want? Yeah, maybe I don't.
Just read the pertinent part about the
Well, this is D. Was it that one?
Yeah, this is a radical.
Oh, that's a, that's a, okay, good.
The one for town see, here we go. This is from the Economic Development Commission, dated November sixteenth. There was the Calderella, during the regular meeting of the Economic Development Commission on November ninth. Representatives on Maxx Place presented their concern with the latest draft. We would like to compliment the zoning commission for the amount of time they spent on amendments for section fifty three. We understand that the point of this regulation is not to discourage the use of drive-throughs, but to manage the growth to maintain the character of Old Sabre. Right, so there's a fine line between not discouraging the use of drive-throughs and promoting the use of drive-throughs.
Yeah.
And we're at this point, I think, on the side of not discouraging the use of drive-throughs. We're not encouraging the use of drive-throughs to the max. We're limiting
Right.
the the drive-throughs.
Yes, and I and I I can see that with the amendment to the regulations that they're restrictive and I think that's great. To try to control.
Right. Yeah, back to the the Plan of Conservation and Development with regard to the the sidewalk plan itself. At the fore of the plan is the promotion of pedestrian safety, connectivity, and the value of sidewalks for leisure and a means of transportation. And drive-throughs are the antithesis of pedestrian walkability from lots of lot across a curb cut for a busy drive-through activity. Granted, there are other businesses that generate traffic as well. But for pedestrians to have to walk on a lot through drive-through traffic is less desirable than than being the best. And so we we have tried to address those issues. And we have, there's a lot of drive-throughs in Old Sabre, not just the three McDonald's, Duncan, and Burger King. Although of those three, you'll note that Burger King being set back the farthest from the road doesn't have congestion in the street issues, their stacking spaces fit on the property. And so with that local knowledge and and looking at the we have drive-throughs, CBS, they have stacking, adequate stacking space on their site. And then the the financial institutions are like previously existing and have according to the proposed regulations, maybe not enough to accommodate drive-through business. But with the recent closing of Webster Bank Drive-Thru Business, as it's like it's like, maybe that's, maybe that's not the direction. People don't even need to go to the bank. The way they need to go to get food. They do it from their phone. Take a picture and cash a check without ever going there. So on the shopping centers, Maxx's Place is listed here in this table from December twelfth, twenty twenty-two, was listed as fifteen-plus acres. And Bennys is fourteen-point-eight-two acres. Job Lot Plaza is eight-point-four acres. And the Old Sabre Shopping Center is thirty-five acres. And so those are B four and B two properties. And drive-throughs are committed, drive-through windows are committed in B four and in B two.
Right now.
Yes. And so there are potential drive-throughs there. And at this point, the zoning commission is setting up the regulations to allow for there to be one restaurant, food and beverage business drive-through window, or Wells Fargo already has a drive-through at the shopping center. So that's a financial drive-through that would check the box of, there already being one. But they could add a drive-through restaurant or food and beverage service somewhere, but only one.
They could not. They could not. So the B two is eliminated for drive-throughs.
In the B two, they can't do that.
With the current, the new text.
With the new text.
Okay, that's what I, why I was confused. So the new text will just be B three and B four.
B four.
Just B four.
Just, just, new text is just B four. Right, okay. With the differential.
Yeah, because that means that the area of Route one, which was called the cutoff when it was first put in in nineteen thirty, that does not, that's not in, it's not subject to allowed drive-throughs. I can't remember which district that was. But this would be. Okay, that's.
There's some B four, I think.
Okay.
All right, so I, I think the zoning commission has put in a lot of work, multiple drafts of the regulations. You consulted with lots of parties. Are there any other referrals that we should mention as having been reviewed?
So.
Riverco and.
I believe those entered into the record, record on our, it was on the fourth and the eighteenth. I can go over them again, but I may have even entered them twice, so.
They've been entered.
Yeah. It was also interesting in the same QSR magazine report on quick-service and fast-food restaurants, they also mentioned the average wait times in line for the major brands. So Taco Bell and Dunkin' Donuts were the fastest at four and a half minutes. But still, an idling car for half minutes actually, I don't know if I should say breaks. The state law of having a car idle for three minutes is actually against the law. A Chick-fil-A had the slowest wait time. It was five minutes, but that was mostly because they were the busiest. But what was really interesting to me in this report from the industry was that customers are waiting, are willing to wait in line for as long as thirteen minutes for their food.
Oh, wow.
As long as the service was friendly. And, and, and I commend the restaurants for promoting good customer service, because that's really, that's one of the factors that people appreciate from when they experience drive-throughs. But an eight-to-ten-minute wait was typically okay, especially if the order was correct. But still, it's just a lot of time that cars are idling and releasing carbon monoxide into the environment. So that's a little trouble.
Are there any other comments from other commissioners, Jerry and John?
We're going to incorporate the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot.
Well, that would be made in a motion. The question, the question would be, are we done with deliberations, or is there more time needed for that?
I feel that we have enough material and had suggestions, two of which we adopted into a text, our proposed text change, and that there's nothing further to be added to the picture to, to change what we have proposed.
I would be in agreement with that statement as well.
I agree.
Jerry?
I appreciate it.
Appreciate all the commissioners' comments.
Blasen, and I think that was part of the initial discretion, but to do this whole thing, we didn't have any control.
Yeah.
We're realizing of what could, it couldn't happen without any modification to our regulations. But I don't think it's a likely for the commissioner. Hello, next to your point.
Yes, very good points.
Yeah, and points that were discussed with the Commission at the time, as well as those in the audience that raised questions.
And as well the planning commissions.
And other boards and commissions in town.
Yeah, definitely.
Very complicated process, far more than we initially thought when we decided to do it. And as we broadened our horizons to talk to as many people as possible through that subject, we reached farther into the pocket of understanding what it could mean and could not mean to the development here in Old Sabre. And I think we've gotten to that point where we look at the entire town and the B four districts of what is allowable under the, under the proposed amendment, and where it would fit to control it in a reasonable manner to meet most needs. And so at this point, I would, someone wants to make a motion on the amendment. Please, please do.
I will make a motion to approve the zoning commission's text change application with the date of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three revision with the two changes that we discussed this evening. And that would be no additional curb cuts and the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-foot maximum street frontage, I'm sorry, minimum street frontage. And this is for section fifty-three, and section nine, and section thirty-two, and section sixty-two, and section sixty-three-point-seven. Because the zoning commission has given due consideration for the Plan of Conservation and Development twenty-twenty-three version and input from referrals. The comprehensive plan of zoning has been considered, and the overall pattern of zoning in Old Sabre has been incorporated into the adoption of these text changes. And local knowledge and experience has been applied with regarding to existing uses to inform us as to how to regulate in section, in the text, in section fifty-three proposed text. That, with, with an effective date of January twenty-ninth, twenty-second.
You do the twenty-second, twenty-ninth?
Twenty-second is okay.
It's a Monday.
From Monday to the twenty-second, it could be advertised.
Yeah, we've got. Yeah, twenty-second. You do the twenty-nine, twenty-second.
With an effective date of January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Seconded by Jerry Lewis.
Any further discussion? Hearing any, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor, signal by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
May for Laura Gray. And staying passes five, passes four-one-zero. Thank you, everyone. Bob made a motion, very second. Moving on to number five, old business workshops, regulation fixes. Given the time of the year and the schedules that we've had, not really prepared to do that this evening at this point. So. Moving on to item six, committee representative and staff reports, Chris Costa, our CEO.
What do we get going about? Well, we had to fill a little bit of a lull with the holiday year. We had a number of enforcement cases to follow up from our previous meeting, or a number of complaints on that sign along the Boston Post Road, and a few businesses that did not have modifications to their special exception permits. So I did send out a little group of letters, cease and desist orders on those signs, as well as have talked to at least two of the businesses that don't have a special exception permit.
The flag signs, the other one.
The flag signs, the A-frame. So there's one area of Route one that's pretty bad. And so it's kind of the, we relaxed things because of COVID. And we made sign enforcement a low priority. However, I think we did send letters earlier last year that sign regulations are still in effect. And so it's now just kind of pushing a little more enforcement. So I'm working on it. The other thing, too, is that the end of the year was, we've given the restaurants with COVID outdoor seating a deadline to come to the Commission. I know our last meeting, or two meetings ago, we had the monkey farm come in. So I'm going to start following up before the weather turns to the other businesses that have not responded or removed their seating before it gets nice and they start using it, and then we have to require them to take it down. So we did have that grace period, which was last season. And I know at least one other business is coming in, but some of them I'm not really sure. And it's some of them, too, with the mafia blocks and so forth. I think it'll be kind of tough to get those to disappear, you know, uncertain. But so that's on my to-do list. What else? I think that's about it. I spent a lot of time on some of your behind-the-scenes work for our regulations and so forth. We did, one thing, too, is I was pretty busy with the, after the election, because we do have a number of different board and commission members, not just this commission, but other ones. So like, for example, ZBA, we have four new members, so I did orientation with each member, new planning members. So it's been kind of a busy month or so.
You're busy.
But at this point, we do have a number of applications coming in. They're just not in yet. And I think with the holiday, people have been distracted, so probably February, I would say. And that's really all that I have, unless you have anything for me.
What do we have on our January seventeenth agenda?
The January seventeenth agenda, you have a special exception application for Van Wildgen's Garden Center. Van Wildgen's is, transferring it to the new calendar here. Van Wildgen's started, they're in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals. They started that hearing in December. And this is to, they're looking to locate on the corner of Orchard Lane and Boston Post Road for the red house in district care is located, Chucker House. So the ZBA continued the matter till January tenth. And the hope of the applicant is that they will obtain variances on January tenth so they can proceed with a special exception permit for your meeting on the seventeenth.
But we're coming at six first, right?
Yes, so at six o'clock on the seventeenth, you did have a request for this commission from Sabre to do a presentation about who they are and what they do. I know they did want to reach out to other folks at the same night, our meeting on the seventeenth is a Wednesday. So at six o'clock, coordinated, have a joint meeting in the Land Use Agency. So any of our board and commission members and different, not necessarily all land use, it can, can attend. It's hybrid, so people can attend from home.
In this room.
It's in this room or hybrid. It's normal. And that would be before your meeting and planning's meeting. But at this point, that's really all you have for business.
Okay. Any other questions from your?
I know Chris has already started enforcement stuff on the A-one roofing thing by King Street, right? The feather hags and the bright lights, and they now have Christmas lights strung on the roof that says A-one, so there's a sign on the roof.
So the applicant, or the property owner, did meet with Joe Ren. I did meet with Joe Ren and the property owner, and we discussed the uses. And it's kind of interesting because the property was sold, the previous owner did some improvements or changes to the site, was coming in for a special exception and never ended up here. Sold the property, the new property owner purchased it, thinking that everything was up to par. So Joe and the property owner and I met, and some of the things that were issues is there used to be concrete blocks in the King Street right-of-way that was replaced with a fence with the lights. That's all still in the right-of-way. There were some modifications to the parking lot. So in striping, that does not appear to meet the regulations. So Joe Ren is working with the property owner to come in. It's going to be a office for, I guess, a roofing office, where they sell roofing, but they don't have the actual material there. So you can just go in and talk about.
Showroom.
Not even more, sales, sales office.
Yeah.
So I'm learning a little bit more about that as well. And then I guess there's some competition across the street, too, with roofing. So they've gone through, and they were issued a cease and desist, that's at the nine-hundred building, the Artesian Builders. And then the other one that we're still waiting for, I guess we're in a roofing trend, the J.J. Rivera folks. Remember, we had the issues on the other side of town of Boston Post Road there. They went through, and they were supposed to come back in for their special permit. They addressed a number of issues. But now they've changed their name, so now they have to go for signs. So I guess we're in hiding.
Well, they already changed the sign.
Well, they need to get permits for the signs, and that's what I meant to say.
Yeah.
One, so what else? I think it's just, it's a lot of busy work with that type of. So at the gas station last meeting, we talked about the Gulf on Boston Post Road. They, the tenant really doesn't want to get an A-two survey to put the vacuum because they feel it's too expensive and Gulf won't pay for it. So they are going to request to be on an agenda to plead their case. I tried to explain that we don't have an up-to-date site plan, and that's really more Gulf. We can't force Gulf to do that. They need to talk to them. And now they're talking about putting the vacuum where the, there's a broken air machine on the sidewalk by the propane tank to moving it over there. So they want to come in and try to, to make a pitch.
There's a concrete block in the second space from Route.
Right, right. That's where they're proposing the vacuum.
Yeah, but the concrete block eats up the parking space now.
Right.
So we don't know the parking, if the parking will meet it. Because remember, too, it was the one space per fifty. It used to be fifty square feet of usable gross floor area. But now with the most recent change from our previous meeting, that went to the one for two fifty. But I don't think, our files really don't have a plan showing a compliant station because that station has been there for so many years. It was before the A-two survey requirement, or it got lost. So.
I see that there is construction activity at the Old Mobile Station on what's commonly referred to as Mariner's Way. Are they proceeding with?
Right now, all I know that they're doing is changing the tanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I know. I saw the tanks.
What's going on at Fine Fettle? I see cars coming and going down there.
They're working on their, meeting their conditions of approach.
I noticed they covered the cannabis dispensary, wording, the carb sign.
It's pending litigation. I'm not, I don't think we should talk about it.
The building does look pretty good.
That's not the comment, because of litigation. Thank you, Chris. If there's nothing else, entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
There's a second date by John Henry. There is seconded, okay. By Don Henry. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal.
Aye.